Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'll call this meeting to order.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Dr. Bellamy?
Present.
Ms. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Signer?
Here.
Ms. Galvin?
Here.
All right, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. I have the pleasure tonight to introduce my recommendation for our next police chief. The city manager's office began our search for a new chief in December of 2017. Altogether, the city received 169 applications for the position. Six candidates were invited to participate in interviews here in Charlottesville with four panels comprised of representatives from the city manager's office and department directors, staff from the police department, and two community panels. The six finalists also interviewed with the city council on that day. At the conclusion of the interviews and a series of reference and background checks, I have chosen Chief Rochelle Brackney as my recommendation for formal approval by the city council. Chief Brackney was introduced at a public press conference last Tuesday on May 15th, and I'm pleased to have her coming aboard with us. Chief Brackney is a retired 30-year veteran of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police and the former chief of police of the George Washington University Police Department. Chief Brackney has received a number of awards in her time in law enforcement. She was recognized as 50 Women of Excellence by the New Pittsburgh Courier in 2014, a Community Peacekeeper of the Year Award by the Northside Coalition for Fair Housing in 2014, the Community Police Officer of the Year Award by the Alliance for Police Accountability, and the Otto Davis Award for Social and Racial Justice at Carnegie Mellon University in 2011. Chief Brackney will be joining us on June 18th after she is approved of this evening by the city council during your consent agenda. And with that, I would like to call Chief Brackney up to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Are you rushing quickly? I know it's busy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I've come from one of six children, so we learn to speak loudly and brave and boldly right from the very beginning. I know Charlottesville has undergone a lot of trauma and turmoil particularly over the last year, and though that I am not here to add to your burden at all, if anything, I'm here to see if there's a way in which we can move the conversation forward, particularly around policing, policing equity, and narrowing the gap between the communities that we serve and the communities that we represent. So I look forward. Thank you so much to the resolution later today. And the thing that I would ask between now and the time I come on board, if you'd just be patient with us and be kind to each other and be kind for those of us who are attempting to move through the process, because that's what really does make a difference regardless of whatever the laws are. And remember, there are human beings behind each and one of the statements that we make towards and about each other. Thank you.
And so there was, Dave Norris is actually going to come up. He should have been here under proclamations, and he's going to talk about Ghana, the Winnebago trip that we just got back on.
We have a great mayor, Harold. Mayor Walker, Vice Mayor Hill, city councilor is Mr. Jones, Ms. Robertson, Ms. Rice, thank you for the opportunity to share a brief report on our recent sister city visit to Winnebago, Ghana. My name is Dave Norris, and I'm speaking with you tonight in my role as volunteer executive director of the Charlottesville-Winnebago Foundation, which is a nonprofit organization that works to promote mutually beneficial exchanges between Charlottesville and Winnebago. Charlottesville and Winnebago became sister cities in 2009, and as you know, this is the first and only sister city relationship that Charlottesville has outside of Europe. Charlottesville chose to become sister cities with Winnebago because of the many commonalities that our communities share. We are similar in population size, we are both university towns, we are both rich in history, I could go on. But one of the main reasons we chose to have a sister city in Ghana in West Africa was due to the fact that so many Charlottesville residents can trace their ancestry back to and through Ghana and West Africa as a result of the centuries-long transatlantic slave trade. Ghana was one of the main transit points for the slave trade, and the people of Ghana have done a commendable job of preserving the history of that horrific era because they do not want to see such an inhuman travesty repeated ever again. We chose as the focus of our recent trip to do a deep dive into the origins of slavery and the history of the transatlantic slave trade. Given the events of last summer and the heightened attention to local issues, heightened local attention to issues of race, history, and inequity, we received an outpouring of interest in the trip. This was our fifth sister city delegation to Winnebago since 2009, and where the others averaged about 10 participants each, this time we had 56, including several members of this audience tonight. We would have had more, but we had to put a cap on the size of the group. Our travel dates were April 30th to May 10th. It was a very large and diverse delegation, 60% African-American, 40% Caucasian and other, high school students to retirees. We had community activists, local historians, artists, business owners, pastors, journalists, the Charlottesville firefighter, the president of the Thomas Jefferson Memorial Foundation, people from a wide variety of economic backgrounds and life experiences, some of whom had never traveled outside of the United States before, and most of whom who had never traveled to the African continent before. Especially among the African-American members of the delegation, a common refrain we heard was that traveling to Africa, to the motherland, had been a lifelong dream. We compiled the suggested reading list for the group in advance of the trip, and the title of the first book on the list captured for many the spirit of this journey, home going. The trip was not easy. There is no way you can stand in the oppressive heat of a darkened dungeons in the bowels of a coastal slave castle where hundreds of captive Africans were packed in together for weeks and months at a time, forced to lie in their own urine and feces and vomit and menses while awaiting the arrival of the ships that would transport them here to the New World, to be auctioned off in places like Court Square, just one block north of where we're gathered tonight, and not be affected deeply. And by the way, don't blink next time you're strolling through Court Square, or else you'll miss the one paltry acknowledgement of the fact that slavery even existed here in our city. There is no way you can walk barefoot along the very path down which countless captives were marched at the point of a gun on their way to the slave trading posts after taking their final baths and being oiled up and branded like animals, and not be affected deeply. There is no way you can hear the stories of the female captives who were singled out for exploitation and abuse by the colonial authorities and not be affected deeply. As I said, the trip was not easy. But this is our history, and it's important for anyone who has been touched by the legacy of slavery, which is to say, all Americans, to be aware of what happened in places like Ghana. As Marcus Garvey once said, "A people without the knowledge of their past history, origin, and culture is like a tree without roots." The question for us now is what to do with this knowledge that we've gained. I suspect you'll be hearing more on that in the weeks and months to come after each of us has had more of a chance to reflect on what we learned. So yes, some of this trip involved an eye-opening and gut-wrenching exploration of the past, but we balanced out those experiences with opportunities for our delegation members to experience the vibrant culture of modern-day Ghana through the prism of our lively sister city of Winnebago. Before I invite Myra Anderson to share some reflections about her time in Ghana, I want to close with a few words of thanks. Most of the members of our delegation paid out of pocket to participate, but we didn't want cost to be a barrier for members of our community who eagerly wished to travel with the group but couldn't afford the participation fee. So the Charlottesville-Winnebago Foundation committed to raising funds in the community for a number of full or partial travel scholarships, and I want to thank the dozens of individuals and organizations who stepped up and made generous contributions toward that cause. In particular, I want to acknowledge Unity Seaville, World Strides, Olivet Presbyterian Church, Random Row Brewery, and the Office of Diversity and Equity at the University of Virginia for their support. It made a world of difference. Mayor Walker, thank you for the terrific job you did as the leader of our delegation. On numerous occasions during the trip, you were asked to speak on behalf of our group, and you always captured the moment perfectly. While no public dollars were used to cover the cost of your trip, you nonetheless represented the Charlottesville public exceedingly well. To my fellow delegation members, thank you for your patience, your good cheer, and your openness to new experiences. I would happily travel again with this fine group of people anywhere and anytime. And last, but certainly not least, we want to give thanks to our wonderful hosts in the Winnebago community for their incredible hospitality, to Mayor John Bartholomew Nensen and his team, Tina Yosin and the members of the Winnebago Sister City Commission, Charlottesville's own Nana Garty, the world's best bus driver, Dominic, and everyone else who welcomed us, fed us, sheltered us, celebrated with us, grieved with us, and helped us to expand our horizons. We say thank you, madassas, and we will see you again soon. Myra.
Good evening. I'm Myra Anderson, a local entrepreneur, poet, and a member of the delegation that went to Ghana. I just want to say that I don't think words can accurately express what it was like to travel for me with a group of almost complete strangers over 5,000 miles into a developing country, different time zone, different language, all of these things. Words really can't bring life to the experience, but I will say, because this is our sister city, and this was the fifth delegation, there's a lot of work that is being done there through the Charlottesville-Winnebago Foundation. So one of the things that stood out to me is that we were able to visit a hospital where we send things like crutches and various things like that, medical supplies. So the whole hospital staff, from the head doctor and nurses, were there to greet us, and they showed so much gratitude and appreciation for the fact that when patients come in and don't have the money for these very basic things, have a broken bone and don't have crutches, they thanked us for the things that we were able to send to them. We did a lot of things while we were there. Another thing that stood out is that when we got there, Ghanaians are the most gracious people I've ever encountered. I'm telling you, the mayor was at the airport. Imagine, we've been traveling all day long. We come out the airport, and there is the mayor and his whole delegation to greet our mayor and to greet us, and that gratitude extended the whole time we were there.
I'm here to see if there's a way in which we can move the conversation forward, particularly around policing, policing equity, and narrowing the gap between the communities that we serve and the communities that we represent. So I look forward. Thank you so much to the resolution later today. And the thing that I would ask between now and the time I come on board, if you'd just be patient with us and be kind to each other and be kind for those of us who are attempting to move through the process, because that's what really does make a difference regardless of whatever the laws are. And remember, there are human beings behind each and one of the statements that we make towards and about each other. Thank you.
And so there was, Dave Norris is actually going to come up. He should have been here under proclamations. And he's going to talk about the Ghana, the Winnebago trip that we just got back on.
We have a great mayor here. Mayor Walker, Vice Mayor Hill, City Councilor is Mr. Jones, Ms. Robertson, Ms. Rice. Thank you for the opportunity to share a brief report on our recent sister city visit to Winnebago, Ghana. My name is Dave Norris, and I'm speaking with you tonight in my role as volunteer executive director of the Charlottesville-Winnebago Foundation, which is a nonprofit organization that works to promote mutually beneficial exchanges between Charlottesville and Winnebago. Charlottesville and Winnebago became sister cities in 2009, and as you know, this is the first and only sister city relationship that Charlottesville has outside of Europe. Charlottesville chose to become sister cities with Winnebago because of the many commonalities that our communities share. We are similar in population size, we are both university towns, we are both rich in history, I could go on. But one of the main reasons we chose to have a sister city in Ghana, in West Africa, was due to the fact that so many Charlottesville residents can trace their ancestry back to and through Ghana and West Africa as a result of the centuries-long transatlantic slave trade. Ghana was one of the main transit points for the slave trade, and the people of Ghana have done a commendable job of preserving the history of that horrific era because they do not want to see such an inhuman travesty repeated ever again. We chose as the focus of our recent trip to do a deep dive into the origins of slavery and the history of the transatlantic slave trade. Given the events of last summer and the heightened attention to local issues, heightened local attention to issues of race, history, and inequity, we received an outpouring of interest in the trip. This was our fifth sister city delegation to Winnebago since 2009, and where the others averaged about 10 participants each, this time we had 56, including several members of this audience tonight. We would have had more, but we had to put a cap on the size of the group. Our travel dates were April 30th to May 10th. It was a very large and diverse delegation, 60% African-American, 40% Caucasian and other, high school students to retirees. We had community activists, local historians, artists, business owners, pastors, journalists, the Charlottesville firefighter, the president of the Thomas Jefferson Memorial Foundation, people from a wide variety of economic backgrounds and life experiences, some of whom had never traveled outside of the United States before, and most of whom who had never traveled to the African continent before. Especially among the African-American members of the delegation, a common refrain we heard was that traveling to Africa, to the motherland, had been a lifelong dream. We compiled a suggested reading list for the group in advance of the trip, and the title of the first book on the list captured for many the spirit of this journey, homegoing. The trip was not easy. There is no way you can stand in the oppressive heat of a darkened dungeons in the bowels of a coastal slave castle where hundreds of captive Africans were packed in together for weeks and months at a time, forced to lie in their own urine and feces and vomit and menses while awaiting the arrival of the ships that would transport them here to the New World, to be auctioned off in places like Court Square, just one block north of where we're gathered tonight, and not be affected deeply. And by the way, don't blink next time you're strolling through Court Square, or else you'll miss the one paltry acknowledgement of the fact that slavery even existed here in our city. There is no way you can walk barefoot along the very path down which countless captives were marched at the point of a gun on their way to the slave trading posts after taking their final baths and being oiled up and branded like animals, and not be affected deeply. There is no way you can hear the stories of the female captives who were singled out for exploitation and abuse by the colonial authorities and not be affected deeply. As I said, the trip was not easy. But this is our history, and it's important for anyone who has been touched by the legacy of slavery, which is to say, all Americans, to be aware of what happened in places like Ghana. As Marcus Garvey once said, "A people without the knowledge of their past history, origin, and culture is like a tree without roots." The question for us now is what to do with this knowledge that we've gained. I suspect you'll be hearing more on that in the weeks and months to come after each of us has had more of a chance to reflect on what we learned. So yes, some of this trip involved an eye-opening and gut-wrenching exploration of the past, but we balanced out those experiences with opportunities for our delegation members to experience the vibrant culture of modern-day Ghana through the prism of our lively sister city of Winnebago. Before I invite Myra Anderson to share some reflections about her time in Ghana, I want to close with a few words of thanks. Most of the members of our delegation paid out of pocket to participate, but we didn't want cost to be a barrier for members of our community who eagerly wished to travel with the group but couldn't afford the participation fee. So the Charlottesville-Winnebago Foundation committed to raising funds in the community for a number of full or partial travel scholarships, and I want to thank the dozens of individuals and organizations who stepped up and made generous contributions toward that cause. In particular, I want to acknowledge Unity Seaville, World Strides, Olivet Presbyterian Church, Random Row Brewery, and the Office of Diversity and Equity at the University of Virginia for their support. It made a world of difference. Mayor Walker, thank you for the terrific job you did as the leader of our delegation. On numerous occasions during the trip, you were asked to speak on behalf of our group, and you always captured the moment perfectly. While no public dollars were used to cover the cost of your trip, you nonetheless represented the Charlottesville public exceedingly well. To my fellow delegation members, thank you for your patience, your good cheer, and your openness to new experiences. I would happily travel again with this fine group of people anywhere and anytime. And last, but certainly not least, we want to give thanks to our wonderful hosts in the Winnebago community for their incredible hospitality, to Mayor John Bartholomew Nensen and his team, Tina Yosin and the members of the Winnebago Sister City Commission, Charlottesville's own Nana Garty, the world's best bus driver, Dominic, and everyone else who welcomed us, fed us, sheltered us, celebrated with us, grieved with us, and helped us to expand our horizons. We say thank you, madassas, and we will see you again soon. Myra.
Good evening. I'm Myra Anderson, a local entrepreneur, poet, and a member of the delegation that went to Ghana. I just want to say that I don't think words can accurately express what it was like to travel, for me, with a group of almost complete strangers over 5,000 miles into a developing country, different time zone, different language, all of these things. Words really can't bring life to the experience, but I will say, because this is our sister city, and this was the fifth delegation, there's a lot of work that is being done there through the Charlottesville-Winnebago Foundation. So one of the things that stood out to me is that we were able to visit a hospital where we send things like crutches and various things like that, medical supplies. So the whole hospital staff, from the head doctor and nurses, were there to greet us, and they showed so much gratitude and appreciation for the fact that when patients come in and don't have the money for these very basic things, have a broken bone and don't have crutches, they thanked us for the things that we were able to send to them. We did a lot of things while we were there. Another thing that stood out is that when we got there, Ghanaians are the most gracious people I've ever encountered. I'm telling you, the mayor was at the airport. Imagine, we've been traveling all day long. We come out the airport, and there is the mayor and his whole delegation to greet our mayor and to greet us, and that gratitude extended the whole time we were there. It's so much to be done in Winnebago, and I feel like I left there with a renewed spirit, not just what we can do as a sister city to help them, but how we can cultivate that and bring that heat back here and make it more practical. And this was a delegation to explore the origins of slavery, and just to quickly piggyback on what Dave has already said, there is no way that anyone can go to those slave castles without closely examining the cost of, human cost of slavery then and as it still prevails today. So I came back with just a renewed spirit to try to work harder for my community and to try to do things more here, but also to connect with our sister city. One of the things that gave me hope towards the end was seeing the two youngest members of our delegation, who were both students at Charlottesville High School, and they were talking on the way back about how they wanted to connect Charlottesville High School with the high school in Ghana, in Winnebago, over the internet to be able, so that they can have that kind of communication. So at the farewell party, the mayor threw us a very, very big farewell party, and at this party, each, all 56 of us, our names were called and we were presented with a scarf. I read this poem, which basically illustrates how I felt about the whole trip before going, and it's called "Dear Africa." Dear Africa, since I was a young girl, I vividly dreamed of thee. I've longed to touch and hold your hand, mother of God's creation, mother of the land. I've yearned for your embrace and to hear your song, to feel your sun upon my face. It's been way, way too long. Africa, mother of resilient seeds, the cradle of birth, straddling the equator, nurture of the earth. Your radiance quenches my spirit and draws me towards your abundance. My eyes wide as the ocean, my mouth exploding with your praises, my uncharted home, my unsung song, bear in the legacy of people proud, brave, and strong, home of germination, divine manifestation, in Winnebago, our beloved sister city. As the elders were honored, my head was bowed. As celebration erupted, my feet became alive and dancing. I was not birthed in the motherland, but my heart beats from the blood of the ancestors. So I am rooted in African soil that ever producing soil is engraved in my soul, and it is well in my soul. And even though we may not speak the same tongues, I can still move to the beat of that drum. My blood pulses to its rhythm as it becomes the essence of sound. And when the drum beats in the wind, and when the beauty dazzles the sun, and when the stories of the ancestors are echoed over and over and over, my soul was nurtured, my spirit rejuvenated, my heart began to ignite, and it was then that I was walking in the footprints of the ancestors then sings my soul. Thank you.
So like Dave said, many of us are still processing, processing this trip. I'm still processing the trip. One thing that stood out to me the most was standing in the, at the castles, on the top floor, they have a cell. And for anyone who had the audacity to think that they should not be enslaved by colonizers, they would put them in these cells, and they were left there, Africa heat, with no food, no water, and they were left there to die. And no matter how many people were in the cell, until the last person who was in the cell died, then they dragged them out and threw their bodies in the ocean. The work that we are now claiming, that we are ready to do since last summer, that I've been telling us that we needed to have been doing long before last summer, everyone needs to have this activity-level knowledge and that book knowledge that we experienced on this trip for you to understand when you are asking, because it's a very different patience that I was asking for last week, when I'm like, we have a new police chief coming on, that kind of patience, versus the patience I think I hear, that I hear from most people when they're asking, especially Black members of this community, to just be a little bit more patient. There is no more, there's no more patience. And when we get, when we understand that the abuses did not stop, they only continued and changed form, and when you are faced with that, on a beautiful shore, can you imagine people who were never able to experience the beach, the beauty, the sand of it, because everything about their experiences were abusive? So we have a lot of work to do. And even, and I've said this, people who think they're doing the work, there's still a lot of work to do. And most of the time, people push to that comfort place, and then they don't want to push past it. But we're going to have to, we're going to have to push past it. So I'm sure that more, I mean, there were 56 of us, and again, every day was full, every day was an adventure, every day was a learning experience. To be able to stand on a riverbank where it was the last bath that you received before you were marched 31 miles to this castle, where if you had the audacity to rebel, you could be placed into a cell, that was our trip. It was not relaxing. It was a lot of work, and I think people who came back have a renewed sense of what it means to do the work that we're claiming that we're going to do in Charlottesville. So hopefully, the next delegation, some of you who are still processing what change actually means, will, you know, take the trip with us, because I'm going back. Okay? All right. So thank you, and thank you, Myra. Okay, so I'll turn it on, over to the city manager for response to community matters.
Oh, I have a proclamation.
Oh, yeah.
I'm afraid, Mayor Walker, this proclamation is going to seem a little bit out of place, but it's pretty basic. This is the National Public Works Week 2018, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to a sustainable and resilient community, and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Charlottesville. Whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public building, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas the city is thankful to all those public works professionals, and whereas it is critical that the people of Charlottesville gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our community, and whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Week since 1960, now therefore, we, the city council of Charlottesville, Virginia, do hereby recognize the week, May 20 to 26, 2018, as National Public Works Week in the city of Charlottesville, and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. Signed and sealed this 21st day of May, 2018, by Mayor Nakia Walker. Is there anyone here to receive this? Anyway, well, thank you to our public works department.
Mayor Walker, one announcement. So, good evening, everyone. We have one quick announcement on behalf of the Banks Collage BCBA Basketball League, our own, bless you, our own Super Bowl champion, Rashad Davis, CHS grad, and Grace, the Game Reduction Through Active Community Engagement Task Force. We're going to be having a cookout on June 9th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., and that'll be at Tonsla Park. So at the event, you will have free food for everyone, a kickball tournament, a kids' moon bounce, live music, and there'll also be games, bless you, there'll also be games there from the BCBA. So again, please feel free to come out. It'll be from 5:00 to 9:00 at Tonsla Park. There's some flyers there. Mr. Foley has one, and we'll have some more for everyone. But again, it'll be a great day for everyone, so I hope to see you there.
And there was just one more that we were asked to share. Preservers of the Daughters of Zion Cemetery and the Albemarle Charlottesville Historical Society cordially invite you to attend Decoration Day, 2:00 p.m. on Sunday, May 27, 2018, at Daughters of Zion Cemetery, at the corner of Oak and South First Streets. Following the ceremony, they'll gather at the Albemarle Charlottesville Historical Society, 202nd Street Northeast for Refreshments Jazz and the Gone But Not Forgotten exhibit.
Okay. All right, so, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. There are no specific issues I had to respond to from the last city council meeting, however, I am going to provide an update to the city council and to the public on the work that's been done to prepare our community and our organization for this summer. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, if you'd like to move or if you're okay where you are. So this work began, actually, last fall after the events of the summer, and several really important issues we've taken on and continue to work on, beginning with our permitting process. We made significant changes in the city's permitting process for special events and demonstrations. We banned a large number of items from being carried into events and demonstrations, including sticks, shields, and open flames. And we changed the requirements for when a permit application can be submitted as well as part of that permitting process. We had legal pursuits that we have taken. We joined the Georgetown Law Center's lawsuit to kill militias and militia-like groups from coming back to Charlottesville. A number of those groups have settled and agreed to not return to Charlottesville as paramilitary groups, as they have in the past. So that is an important step forward to try to keep some of those groups from coming back again to Charlottesville. Training and planning, a lot has gone on to help us prepare for any events this summer. We designated the fire chief as a local emergency management coordinator. We created the Committee on Safety and Emergency Preparedness, which the chief is overseeing. CSEP is overseeing our NIMS and ICS training, and it's National Incident Management System, and Incident Command System training for the city employees and for regional planning purposes. We have a regional special event planning group that's been formed and is meeting biweekly and includes the city, Albemarle County, UVA, the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and the Virginia State Police. We've also created a smaller incident management team with assistance from VDEM, and we're providing outside sources to develop incident action plans, and we are preparing for those plans to be finalized in the next few weeks. We're also establishing protocols for mutual aid here in the city with our regional partners. Key staff have been through the Virginia Municipal League's training on policing demonstrations, protests, and civil unrest. We had two major training sessions there. Over 80% of our department's personnel have received additional crowd training, crowd management training. And we've had an adoption of the IACP, that's the International Association of Chiefs of Police, Model Policy for Crowd Management and Civil Disturbances. We've had joint training days, and we are preparing to schedule more of those with our regional and state partners. We've had additional de-escalation training that's been scheduled for officers in June. We have an upcoming three-day training course on preparation and response to civil disorders as well. City employees have received introductory NIMS and ICS training, and will receive that by midsummer. Supervisors and managers will receive more advanced training in June. The city's leadership team received an introductory course in stress first aid and implicit bias. And city employees were given the opportunity to attend a session on implicit bias with UVA's Brian Nosek at the Paramount Theater. There are also, Mr. Nosek is working with our Office of Human Rights to offer up another implicit bias training for the public, that's on June 11th at 6:00 p.m. at the Martin Luther King Performing Arts Center, and that's free and open to the public. So one of the things that we had hoped for going into the fall and winter of last year was to get some assistance from the General Assembly. Our local representatives were very helpful, Delegate DeScano and Senator Creed Eads, but unfortunately, we were not successful in getting several bills passed that would have given the city some authority to limit weapons, more specifically firearms, in public spaces. We had asked for the authority to control the safety of public spaces and buildings, the prohibition of certain firearms in Charlottesville, and the authority to make local decisions on Confederate monuments. None of those bills passed in the General Assembly. So one of the areas that folks focused on last year was attempts to restore faith in local government. And so the city council has taken some significant steps in order to do that, establishing a civilian review board, which we'll hear more about in a few minutes and hear from the public on in a few minutes. They created an equity package of $1 million that was back in December. That came out of surplus funding from last year. That's in addition to the equity package that the city council passed in April of 2017. With our current budget, the most recently adopted budget, we increased the living wage to $14.40 per hour for all of our employees, with the hope of moving it to $15 an hour in fiscal year 20. We've continued to support workforce development here in the community. We've increased the Affordable Housing Fund to $3.4 million, added another $500,000 to CRHA for redevelopment, and created a minority business coordinator position as well to help here in the city. So those are some of the steps that the city has taken. So those are some of the, some of the steps that the city has taken to try to address real challenges and concerns that we have in our community. So as we move forward, we'll be providing regular updates for the city council and the public. We'll continue to prep for this summer's events and communicating that out to the community as to what we're doing and how they can be involved, and we're working to try to build a resilient Charlottesville as we move forward. So with that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
I don't see none of theirs as protected. Protect us communities as a whole.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
So you were asking us, did we have?
How are you going to stop Gary Pleasance from releasing toxic gas on the citizens?
So public comment is coming?
Yeah.
Would there be, will the city be, is there a strategy for how the city's going to communicate to stakeholders, to people, let them know what's happening, have a one-stop?
This was the first step in that process tonight, providing that information on what's occurred. Over the course of the next few weeks and next couple of months, we'll provide more information out to the public via social media, on our website, and also through the mainstream media as well, providing updates to folks as we move forward. So yes, we'll have a very robust communications plan.
And if folks, stakeholders, have questions or ideas, they want to be in touch, who should they, who should they contact with your office?
They can contact the city manager's office at 970-3101. At some point in the very near future, we're going to establish a webpage where people can get information, and then we'll have some contact information on there as well.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments, questions? All right, so, boards and commissions.
What's that next? This evening, the city council has appointed the following to boards and commissions. The Albemarle Charlottesville Historical Society, Ray Berry, John Conover, Phyllis Lefler. Building Code Board of Appeals, Keith Woodard. The Charlottesville-Albemarle Convention and Visitors Bureau, Jennifer Mayo. The Charlottesville Economic Development Authority, Edward Schmitz. The Citizen Transportation Advisory Committee, Michael Smith. The JABA Board of Directors, Richard Brew and Elaine Phillips. The Region 10 Community Board, John Crowstain and Sina McGill. The Sister City Commission, Cliff Maxwell. And the Tree Commission, Paul Josie, Lawson Levell, and Peter Russell. And the Tree Commission, Paul Josie, Lawson Levell, and Peter Russell.
I move to adopt the boards and commissions selections.
Second.
Vote. Okay, so we'll... Oh, five to zero. The five mic speaker. All right, so we're gonna, um, we have some time, so we'll continue with, uh, community matters. So, first up is Paul Wright. Paul Wright. Mary Carey.
Mary Carey, city resident. Myra. Girl. She was great. I love that point. I like to, uh, uh, take this time to thank all y'all that went on that trip, because I was supposed to have gone. I didn't quite make it, and Dave asked me, and asked me, and I just couldn't do it. But I, I see I missed, uh, a very, very rewarding experience, and I think I would be up here crying now if I had have gone, because I'm deep into my black history. But anyway, I don't want to get emotional up here, so I just want to say, Mr. Jones, thank you for answering my email so promptly. You did good. Because like, I usually, usually take you at least a week, but you did in a couple days. Thank you very much. And by going down there the other day, uh, in a rainstorm, by the rain raining in this, we almost got waterlogged here this last week, that tree is out this far. Because when we were coming down Cherry Avenue to turn into First Street, there was a car all the way out in the road, blowing at us, because we can't get around, because the tree's blocking him from looking to the left. So, as soon as you can get that taken care of, it, you know, people would love to, uh, have that done before it grow anymore, because if it grow anymore, it's going to grow all the way up to, up the hill. And like to welcome the, uh, the new chief and her handsome husband to the city. And, uh, to all of you councilmen, Ms. Gavin, I love you very much, you've been good and everything like that, whatever, but please stop saying that you the oldest sitting councilperson, because I feel like I'm the oldest speaker, because I've been coming in here before he, which I'm pointing to Mr., uh, Bellamy, was born. So, this make me feel like I'm ancient. So, when you just say I've been sitting longer, don't say older.
Point well taken, thank you.
And, and Ms. Walker, I appreciate you. I love you. I will support you as long as you sitting in that seat, regardless of what's going on in this city. I've heard a lot of negative things one way, and I heard a lot of very good things the other way. So, all the negative stuff, forget it, because I'll take over the negative part. And far as, uh, the police coming over there to Crescent Halls the other day and searching people's apartments, I was wondering if they had a search warrant. I'm just saying, a seventy-six-year-old woman with nowhere to go, it's ridiculous. You got people over there breaking into machines, people setting a building on fire, and they haven't been evicted. So, think about it. Thank you.
Mark Heisey?
Um, I just wanted to, Mark Heisey, Albemarle County. Um, I wanted to share a few thoughts about police accountability. Um, we haven't had any police accountability since the events of this summer. We need accountability. Um, so, you know, with the CRB coming up, um, we need that board to be able to hold police accountable. Um... I was told that I wasn't allowed to speak during public comment on this matter, so I'm completely unprepared. Um, so, I'll just share a few thoughts that I think I have together. So, there's a couple of things that have already concerned me about, um, Dr. Brackney. Um, one is that, um, she said that, um, she wouldn't be investigating, um, police misconduct around A-12, um, which is really concerning, um, considering that she hasn't even taken office yet, so I'm wondering what decision, what she's basing that decision on? Um, if it's the HAFE report, um, which she's, which she has read, um, but if she's taking that recommendation from the HAFE report, I would ask her not to. Um, the HAFE report was paid for by the city and was seriously flawed, um, especially around J-8. Um, you know, we saw, uh, a black female activist, um, arrested violently by the police, um, and then later Judge Downer determined that she wasn't even doing anything even illegal at the time. Um, she was trying to do civil disobedience, and before she could, uh, she was violently arrested by the cops. Um, we saw them stand back and allow Nazis and white supremacists to terrorize, traumatize, injure people in our community, and kill Heather Heyer. Um, that, there needs to be some accountability for that, and that she's already determined that there won't be as deeply concerning. Um, the other major recommendation in the HAFE report was that police do more surveillance. Um, that's deeply troubling, and, um, especially given the fact that, um, based on her resume, I do believe that, um, Dr. Brackney is very capable of doing surveillance, but I would ask her not to give more surveillance powers to, um, the Charlottesville Police Department. Um, we saw in the lead-up to August 12th that they showed up at the homes of, um, activists of color who have already been targeted by the state, while they sent, um, polite emails to white activists, and we know why that is. Um, we know that police infiltrated meetings of anti-racist, uh, anti-racist, uh, organizers in the lead-up to A-12. Um, we know that anti-racists were more heavily surveilled, uh, than, uh, self-proclaimed Nazis leading up to August 12th, because in a world where the idea of a black identity extremist is believed to be credible, we know what, who the police will surveil and who they're concerned about. We know that surveillance won't make us more safe, that it'll make us less safe, and we know that it's the members of this community who have been targeted by survey, police surveillance, who have been keeping the, uh, community safe, and that they'll be less able to do that if they're, um, oppressed by the state. Thank you.
Liz Reynolds?
Hello, council. I'm Liz Reynolds. I live in the city. Um, so I saw a young black man pulled over by a white cop today on the side of Rugby Road, and I thought, as I do pretty often these days, um, that we really need to find more and better ways to talk about race in this country. Uh, there's a growing subset of the white population with the will and desire to explore our whiteness and our power and our privilege, but most of us truly have no idea how to go about doing that. Um, and so, because thinking about and talking about race is a choice for most of us who are white, not a necessity, uh, it gets pushed aside very often because of the inevitable fear and discomfort that comes with confronting the darker sides of ourselves. Uh, I believe that issues like racial profiling, segregation in schools, and unequal access to fair housing link back to a very different lived experience of black and white Americans. And to bridge this gap in knowledge for white people who have been willfully or simply ignorantly sheltered in their understanding of this country, we really need education, white people, us, about institutional racism and the country, this country that has been built upon it. Uh, so southern cities like Atlanta and Raleigh have embraced the model of sponsoring trainings for city leaders and key stakeholders as a mode of institutional transformation in the places that already hold power and the ability to affect change. Um, the Racial Equity Institute, based out of Greensboro, North Carolina, offers such trainings throughout the southeast, and I would like to encourage the council to read over the materials I have brought from communicating with them, uh, and consider allocating funds to sponsor one of their trainings. In closing, I'd like to say that a lot of what seems to go on here, um, I have very limited experience, but, with somebody going over it, but, um, it seems like we're talking about very real inequities through a somewhat removed lens. Um, when we elect a new police chief or when we approve a new condo development, race is a very real issue, but oftentimes, we're not talking about it. Um, so I would like to sincerely encourage council to point some of our resources and attention on this issue of institutional racism, historically, culturally, and currently, uh, in the hopes that education can bring change to all the other aspects of governmental domain where transformation is needed. Um, I have a booklet here that they sent me. I hope one of you reads it. Thanks.
Mr... Madam Mayor, so under our new rules, we can have some, we have some back and forth. So, Mr. Jones, would you mind, um, so Mr. Bellamy and I last fall met with a gentleman named Brian Nosick, who runs, who does implicit bias trainings around the country, and if, and he offered to do workshops for the city and for the community, and I know that there have been, if you wouldn't mind sharing what's happened in the city so far, because I think there was one already for city staff, and then this one that's coming up was a result of, and I don't know how different it is from what we're hearing about here, but, there was a staff training?
Actually, there was a, there was a training that was done for all city employees. All city employees were invited to be part of that discussion, and that occurred at the Paramount Theater, um, a couple of months ago. Um, there's also been, uh, efforts to, uh, to work with businesses in our community on implicit bias, and then we have the public meeting coming up on June 11th at 6:00 PM at the Martin Luther King Performing Arts Center.
And how many people came to the staff one?
Uh, over four, over four hundred people, about four hundred and fifty people attended that one.
Well, well, thank you. I want to look very carefully at what you're saying.
Yeah, and I'll look at it, um, and I think all of us are, you know, really serious about, I mean, implicit bias is one avenue. I don't, it's not on my list at all, but, um, and I think there are some serious issues with accountability with it, but it's a, I guess, a starting point for someone. But I will, um, but I think we, we all will look at this and see, and there are some other, um, other avenues that we're exploring too. So, James Hinchley?
Good evening. I'm Jim Hinchley, a city resident. And I was reading in the Seaville this week about the, um, pilgrimage that's being planned to Montgomery, uh, and the lynching memorial, uh, from a lynching that happened in 1898 in Albemarle County. And I was reading through the article, and, uh, something I'd like to, um, give the council as a quote from the article, Andrea Douglas, uh, speaking about local history. And she says, quote, "It's important to be able to create a full and inclusive Charlottesville history," end quote, says Douglas, one that includes black people. Quote, "Charlottesville didn't become integrated because white people said it was the right thing to do." That brings me to a point that I've, um, expressed to council before, something I asked council to continue considering, uh, because the final decision is coming up in July, and that is to consider naming Emancipation Park Swanson Legacy Park. And Swanson Legacy Park is a, um, way of illustrating and remembering local Charlottesville history of a black person who went up against the white supremacists in the University of Virginia Board of Visitors and succeeded in integrating the University of Virginia in 1950. Uh, and in addition, in reference to Andrea Douglas's comments about the inclusive history including black people, his legal team was all black lawyers, including Thurgood Marshall and Oliver Hill and Spotswood Robinson. These are heroes of the civil rights movement. So, I ask you to continue to be considering the, uh, possibility of naming Emancipation Park Swanson Legacy Park. Thank you.
Myra Anderson?
So, I wanted to just, uh, take a few moments and speak about mental health, because May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and one in four people struggle with a mental health condition. I am one of those individuals, and I've struggled most of my life, and I just think that I could sum it up in the words of Ms. Sophia, "All my life, I had to fight." And there is the devastation of being diagnosed with a mental illness, and it becomes a double-edged sword when you are met with a society that is stigmatizing, that is discriminating, and that does not make it easy for you to heal, does not create an environment that is conducive to healing. It is very, very, very hard, and I've been able to take a stand and stand up for the things that I think are right and to challenge injustices, but I shouldn't have to do that. My job should be to just get better. I shouldn't have to continually come up against a system and challenge a system and fight a system when I'm just fighting every day just to stay well and just to stay here. And although there are a lot of things that we've moved forward as far as mental health, if you're in a mental health crisis in the city, it is likely that you can stay in the emergency room for eight, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, before there's a bed available somewhere else in the state. But if you had any other problem and you needed to be hospitalized, it would just be as simple as them arranging one of the six hundred rooms in the local hospital. It shouldn't be, because now you've gone somewhere else and you don't even have access to your family and friends to come visit you every single day. The facts are, one in four people struggle. This is a physiological condition. This isn't a condition where you can just will yourself better, where you can just get up and, and everything is going to be okay. And I think we need to start as a community and as a city, s- start exploring the issue more of mental health, because the reality is, a lot of people are struggling, and they don't even feel comfortable going to the places that we have to receive help because of the stigma. It should not be like that. Having a mental health problem should be no different than say, "Oh, I'm, I'm in remission from cancer, only I'm recovering from mental health." And we need a commitment from the top, from the leadership down, to move us forward. Thank you.
So, Elena Sh- Smelter?
Hello. Um, I'm from Monticello High School, and I'm here just to talk a little bit about the Habitat for Humanity-Albemarle County partnership that has gone on for the redevelopment of Southwood, and to encourage you all to maybe implement some similar projects in public-private partnerships when you all explore the, um, housing crisis that's going on in Charlottesville City, Albemarle County, and surrounding land. Um, so, the project of redeveloping the Southwood Mobile Home Park on Fifth Street is a very large project, so Habitat could not take it on alone. So, Albemarle County has, uh, has partnered with them to provide funding and access to grants, while Habitat actually heads up the projects and puts in all of the, you know, sweat hours and everything. So, Habitat's unique approach engages the homeowners and, um, and they commit to educating the homeowners before, on financial issues and financial literacy before they actually give them their homes, so they make sure that all of, everything, everybody knows what they're doing before they get into it, so that they can actually help people to, um, to kind of pull themselves up instead of just saying, "This is a house, live in it, and hopefully you can make, make your payments." Um, so we believe that Charlottesville could greatly get, benefit from a partnership like this, and this project is going to improve the community that already exists and create more mixed-income housing, because Habitat dedicates, is dedicated to teaching their homeowners financial skills and listening to the comments and desires of the community before they even start building. It, um, makes the projects very successful. So... So the county has been able to, um, improve the living conditions of their residents, and they will be making money off of the commercialization of the land around the city, so it's a nice win-win. Um, so I just encourage you all to pay attention to the Southwood project that's going on and use it as an example as you, uh, explore the issue of low-income housing and solutions for that in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Lena Seville?
I came here to, uh, speak to you about gentrification, but I also was a member of the Sister City delegation with our mayor Nakaya, um, and I, uh, I wanted to just briefly mention that, um, I'm not, I'm not real comfortable talking about my personal experiences in a public manner as some of these other speakers have, but it was, uh, an incredibly powerful experience, um, and I learned a lot from my fellow travelers and, and the people that were so kind to us there, and I would, I would highly recommend it to anyone. I'm not going to talk about anymore, or I will not get through my comment that I came here to talk to you about, about gentrification, so I'm going to switch gears now. And, um, some, some people knocked on my door today, or today, this weekend, just a couple of days ago, sorry, I'm a little tired, still a little jet-lagged, um, about giving me a free tree, right? And, uh, and, but it's very specific about where this tree can go. So, um, it's, it's part of the Parks and Rec and the Charlottesville Area Tree Stewards and the Tree Commission. So this is a city government-promoted program to, to give people trees, and, and the benefits of trees are, they provide shade and they lower stormwater runoff. And I should say that I, I've studied environmental science, and, and that's true, they do provide shade and they lower stormwater runoff, those are great things. But these trees are only for the front yard, and they're only small ornamental trees, which don't really provide a lot of shade or do much for stormwater runoff. When you put them in the front yard, these are required to go in the front yard, they've got to be small trees because of all those pipes. These are strictly ornamentals. And you know what I think is also interesting here, underneath the provide shade and lowering stormwater runoff is, increases real estate value. There's lots of studies about how making everything prettier increases real estate value. And here we have what appears to be some city-sponsored gentrification programs. Thank you.
Um, Mayor Walker, may I make a comment? So, um, thank you, a very interesting interpretation of that. And I ask, so is it supposed to be that people who are in poverty or don't have wealth are supposed to live in neighborhoods devoid of trees and green? I ask, I'm asking a, a question. Um, I, because, because it really is a question of social equity.
No, you can, you can have trees in your backyard, right? Trees in your backyard can improve, it can improve your quality of life. It's, you know, you can have, sure, put some trees in the backyard, but this is only for the front yard. So, so that doesn't quite fit. I was actually on the Tree Commission when they were discussing this.
So you have no problems with trees?
Okay. I was on the Tree Commission when they were discussing this.
That's all I want to know.
I love trees, right? But, but, but we brought up, why are these only in the front yards? Why is it only in the front yards of tiny, of houses that are small, that have small front yards? What, if you really care about trees and tree canopy and quality of life and providing shade, why can they only be in the front yard and tiny little ornamental trees that increase property values? Why aren't we putting big trees in people's backyards where they can enjoy it with their friends and their families?
Mayor Walker, just, I have no problem with, with, um, large trees. Thank you.
So Star?
She needs to praise her question. Yeah, she needs to praise your question. Because I didn't understand what you asked. She made it sound like only rich people supposed to have trees.
Mayor Walker, may I, because I, I was, my, that was my question, sir. I was asking Ms. Seville if only rich people were supposed to have trees. So that's, that was the question I was asking, because I don't believe that's the case. I think we all need to have beautiful, healthy environments, sir.
Okay, so Star is up here, removing. Thank you.
Come on, let's let her speak. Let's let her speak.
My name is Star Peterson, and Charlottesville is my home. I'm appalled that the new police chief does not want to investigate the deadly events of last summer. Some of us cannot so easily leave that pain and trauma behind. Everyone who was present that day wrestles with post-traumatic stress disorder. Many people like myself who were physically injured are still fighting to regain the skills that we once took for granted. I can't just leave last summer behind. I just had my fourth surgery on the leg that James Fields ran over because Charlottesville Police failed to put the proper barriers on our street. Every single step I take hurts. It hurts to stand, it hurts to drive, I can't play tag with my little boy. The pain and physical therapy brings me to tears. The leadership within this, the police department has a responsibility to acknowledge the police's failures of last summer and to hold the responsible parties accountable. We cannot move forward until we address the horrendous events of last summer and the racism that is deeply entrenched with our police department. Our pain will not let us leave last summer behind. We will not let you move on so easily. That is a promise. And I have one more thing. If we continue to live on, I need to take a look at my leg. These are the things that opened three times. He broke two parts of my back, he broke my rib, he broke both legs. This leg was crushed. Assemble it, there are 18 holes in my legs from the screws I had to put in to try to rebuild a leg. I can't even begin to describe the pain of having holes in your leg every single time I step. So please keep this in mind when you try to move forward. We want to move forward, but we can't.
You don't have a response for that?
Are you asking me? Because if I had a response, I would have responded.
She gets up there and she shows you her pain, her literal scars.
We listen to her. Go ahead.
But they show her scars, she's listening to them.
Chill, 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 chill. Come on, Mr. Collins. It's cool, come on.
Hey, Brandon. Good evening. Brandon Collins, uh, I live in the city of Charlottesville. I've lived here my entire life, um, have three children who've lived here their entire lives. Um, I'm also, uh, was on the ground on August 11th, 12th, and 13th, as was my daughter, and as was probably at least half of the room in here, and, um, you know, I think it is, uh, extremely important that, uh, what happened gets recognized by our new police chief when she comes on board. Um, and I, I'm here to actually talk about the land bank, but I will just give a few examples. So, uh, my friend Star, deeply injured, there was a death, there was about at least 19 other extreme injuries. There were people beaten in the streets. Uh, I cannot count the amount of violent attacks I witnessed on Market Street on the 12th. I cannot count, uh, the number of people who were severely injured on the 11th. There were gunshots fired at people. Uh, a woman in a wheelchair, uh, was doused in lighter fluid, uh, with torches thrown at her on the 11th, uh, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. We, we hear more and more, and that's, I talk to my friends, um, we hear more and more of these things. So we, we can't ignore that, uh, and our new chief certainly should not, and, and we hope that our new chief will stand up for us and protect us in a, uh, coming into the summer. Now, the land bank, I'm so tired of talking about the land bank, and I know it's really boring, but, um, to go back to July, uh, the idea of a land bank was brought forward as a way to bypass the Housing Authority and create some affordable housing, and we all had some issues with that, and then the land bank came forward and we brought forward those issues. And the land bank went to the Housing Advisory Committee, discussed it, and they had listened to the public, they had listened to the concerns, and they had a community process to talk about what was acceptable for the land bank. Uh, myself and many of my colleagues were opposed to land bank, and so we sat down with the hack, and we kind of tolerated the idea of a land bank when they came forward with some fairly, um, big ideas in terms of how we would use that, in terms of it had to only be used for affordable housing, uh, there, there needs to be a connection with nonprofits to provide, uh, affordable housing in this city and a number of other things. And here we are, again, looking at the land bank with very little change in the ordinance for you to consider, except that it does sort of mention affordable housing, but it does not in any way, shape, or form tell you affordable for whom. It does not talk about AMI levels, it doesn't talk about extremely low income. It just chalks it up to this new board that'll get created, and we can go battle all this out again. So I, I would like to say, uh, we need a land bank that's going to provide, that's going to be explicit in the ordinance that it's for affordable housing for extremely low-income people, uh, that nonprofits, Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority are the proper places to use that land bank, uh, that we need a community process for how land is dealt with in that land bank, and a bunch of other things. And I think if you can't get that right tonight, there is no reason and no rush to pass the land bank tonight. So if you can't do those very basic things, uh, many of us are deeply opposed to the land bank. Thank you.
Rosia Parker?
Speak, ma'am. My name is Rosia Parker. All I keep hearing is patience. I have none. I have no respect still for none of you. So how would I have patience for any of you? The patience is every day I wake up, and I gotta go figure what's next for me. How am I gonna survive mentally, emotionally? Every day that May comes, every day the closer I'm getting to May 24th and thereafter, or May 17th till now, I'm devastated. I don't know if I'm coming or I'm going. My PTSD and bipolar is through the roof. I have no medication, no money, no way of getting it. The money that was here, there is nothing else left for me. So can y'all explain as city councilmen that did not take heed to everything that was presented last year, to the devastation that took place July 8th, August 11th and 12th, to now that y'all want to feel some type of compassion? Compassion is late, too late for the ones that are hurting you, that are physically, mentally, and emotionally hurt. Our children are far more devastated than I am standing here. Do y'all have an understanding of what that is to watch these children suffer and have no understanding why? There are still no apologies to our friendship court. There are still no apologies really from city council to the community. And y'all still want to talk about patience? I have none, and neither do my black people that stand with me. For my mother, I have no patience. Generations of patience is done. I might not have been to Africa, but my child was with Dave Norris, and I have been doing the fight since '09, when my child came back from Africa explaining the things that took place, the pictures that took place. I know what it's like, being a black African queen mama, standing up, being a revolutionary, fighting for what belongs to me, and that's my people and humanity. And you, I appreciate you coming, but are you truly ready? Because just because you're transphobic and you're, you're saying how people go, don't mean nothing, yeah? If they couldn't defend a black, if the black man couldn't defend the black people here, what are you gonna do for us?
Your sister should change.
I don't care if your sister are not. Look at the sisters that came, and the men have come here before, and they have not helped us, they have harmed us. So for me to be a black woman standing here, I want you to feel my pain, and the pains of the ones that came before us.
You gonna need support though.
Anthony Woodard?
Hello, my name is Anthony. I just have a, one little small topic pertaining to the pedestrian and motor safeties in the city of Charlottesville. Under the current, uh, city code of 28-31, here you go. It speaks on the prohibited areas that pedestrians should, uh, solicitation is prohibited at certain intersections, and basically I copied it twice, but on one of those papers that y'all got, you'll see a little, should see a little, I'm sorry, get a little asterisk on, on, which ain't on your whole copy. But, uh, anyway, it would show that, uh, the intersection of, uh, US Route 2, yeah, no, US Route 250 and Hydraulic Road should be inserted as subdivision or subsection E of that, uh, stat code to go along with the other four prohibited areas, because of the, uh, if you look at number D, that is, uh, less high volume, less, uh, speed, you know, in D than is it is in E. So I think that the, uh, that intersection should be added among the list of other intersections, because the Route 250 and Hydraulic is more higher speed than downtown, up on the, uh, Main Street and Ridge and McIntyre, and plus the median strip's real narrow, because the other day pedestrians just walked out, got some money, came back, and I nearly hit them. I had the choice of whether I should stop or just keep going and hit them. So I chose this thing to stop, and I brought it to a friend of mine's attention. He said, typed, um, take it to city council. So I think that the, uh, that intersection is highly dangerous, just like the rest of them, so that should be inserted among that list. And as far as, uh, the city police department's concerned, I look at it like this, I've had my little issues with them in the past, but we've got over them, but you cannot expect the police to do everything at 100% at any person's one satisfaction. Just like if a police officer rolls up on a vehicle, pulls the vehicle over, and you got five people in it, if people do what they're supposed to do when officers encounter action with them, then it'd be a lot less hatred, a lot less, uh, um, I don't care who, what color you is, because I can get this, you know, uh, city attorney to do his hand like this, and I put my hand up beside his palm of his hand, it's the same, uh, skin color, it's just that blacks got a darker skin color than whites. If we all bleed, we all bleed the same color, red. But other than that, other than that, I said, uh, bring that to y'all.
We're treated the same. We're like bleed the same, but we ain't treated the same.
Well, that's, could you ask for it?
I have to not be treated right. Who do you think you are? Who do you think you are? Because I'm black. How the hell do you think you are? Why you even have racist motherfuckers? You motherfuckers. Really? Really?
That's childish field.
Really?
That's childish field.
Nancy.
Police don't want to do shit but laugh at it.
We don't ask for nothing that's done to us around here by the police. Nothing. How, who do you think you are to say that to me, man?
He's white, he makes me better than everybody.
That's your white privilege. Say it to me on the motherfucking street.
Black lives matter, know that.
Wow. Jesus, Lord, help me take the wheel.
Nancy.
And I just got out of the hospital having freaking heart pain, and gotta go through something like that? And I just got out of the hospital and this name don't click, really?
Katrina. You've got an awful lot to do on that work plan, it seems like. My name is Nancy Carpenter, I'm a city resident. I'm here tonight, a couple of comments. One is on the comprehensive plan that your planning commission is currently undergoing some revitalization. If it doesn't include a strong housing strategy, because housing is the hub, housing is the hub where the spokes for every other chapter that comprehensive plan comes out of, okay? You're paying $50,000 to a consultant to do a housing strategy study? Well, you know, if, we, we tend to look at what Austin, Texas does, because we see that that's a similar city to what Charlottesville is. Well, they're involved in an initiative, it's called Policy Link, is the group, it's a policy link, all-in cities anti-displacement policy network, and that's very important. If your housing strategy doesn't include- If your housing strategy doesn't include strong anti-displacement strategies, toss it out. What they're gonna be looking at in their strategies are strong anti-eviction policies, they're gonna be looking at land trusts, not land banks, because land trusts create more equity when it comes to housing affordability. They're also gonna be looking at inclusionary zoning, which I think some of my comrades have talked about, and some other strategies. Because believe it or not, 51% of renters in this country are burdened by the cost. We've heard over the weekend that 40% of Americans are burdened by the cost of shelter, food, and healthcare. And out of the, out of that 51% that I just talked about, 60% are female heads of household that are women of color who struggle day and I see it every day, I see it every day with the cohort that I work with. And I know that it goes up the AMI index. So I'm hoping that you will adopt a strong housing strategy. If that's not the core, and you don't need to spend $50,000 to do it, you know, you can Google search all the information you want. The other thing is, we're spending, you may be spending $100,000 for a strategy on some pedestrian security risk assessment. Close across streets. Save $100,000, put that towards an anti-eviction policy for people in this city. You spent $75,000 to give the DBAC. What have they done with that money? There apparently are some minority-owned businesses on the downtown mall that don't even know they can be a member of this, that have not had any outreach activity towards them, who might be able to benefit from that. So that's over a quarter of a million dollars that you're planning to use in studies and things that I think that you could do a little bit more in-house. You haven't used the money, don't know where it's going. And the other thing is, we have a new police chief. If part of that resilience and part of that restoration isn't getting rid of Gary Pleasance, then you haven't done a damn thing.
Ms. Carpenter. Mayor Walker, may I respond? So, Ms. Carpenter, thanks for your comments, specifically in regards to Policy Link. So I spoke at Policy Link early in the year. And when you look at their anti eviction and inclusionary zoning practices, it's a little different from what we're able to do. So the anti eviction piece is something that we could look at, but the inclusionary zoning by Dillon Rule, we're not allowed to do. So there are some, no, so there are some jurisdictions in Virginia who, they don't call it inclusionary zoning, but they use different practices, something that we definitely can look at. But I would, in regards to like the land bank and the land trust, I agree with you, but I think that's something that we should have further conversation about, not just me, maybe all of us. And when we look at the housing study and then also talking to the hack, so it's some, it's some meat in there. And I'd love to hook you up with some folks from Policy Link. But I think it's also important, like, when we're, when we're making the suggestion specifically looking at anti eviction practices and or policies, like how, the ramifications that they have across the gamut, right? So from some individuals who may possibly own a home, like it could be a person of color who is, just has a really, really bad tenant, right? And do we create policies that then prevent them from being able to actually take care of the place that they have and/or it's allowing a tenant to stay in who is just, has shown that they don't, don't care about being there? So maybe it's a further conversation, I didn't mean to cut you off.
One of the strategies would be every person who's on the docket, like tomorrow, that has an unlawful detainee, should have a free attorney. They've shown that with an attorney involved on the defendant's side, that sometimes it results in a greater retention of tenancy between the landlord and their tenant than not having. And so even though we have LJAC and they do, but they're still stressed.
Yeah.
So every, every person that's going to have to go report for someone's needs.
Yeah, they talked about this on NPR earlier today, and I know Richmond is moving towards that model somewhat. So we could definitely further the conversation.
A very quick response, also just add on to Mr. Velmy's. Ms. Carpenter, we, and Mr. Jones, we included as part of the equity package that, there was a part of that which was about gentrification measures. And we have just created a new staff position to help council with, with policy and with getting better ideas and doing research, because you're right, I mean, there's a ton of new stuff out there about best practices on anti-displacement. There's, there are public advocate positions that have been proposed. So I think this would be a great thing to work on quickly. And we have actually allocated some money, although it hasn't been specifically allocated yet, to deal with, to help us get forward on gentrification. So it's very well taken, and we will now have some resources to really try and do some policy work, which is how we're, which is how we're set up. So thank you.
And Mayor Walker, if I may say one more thing, about the idea about the land banks, the land trusts, the housing authority, Charlottesville Economic Development Authority, they're all, all supposed to work together and complement one another. And one thing that really is, is different about a land bank, and when you look at the landscape in Charlottesville, so much of what we have left by way of land to build on is like a parking lot, or it's a, an old obsolete building. A land bank can clean the land up, can get the resources to do that, and then it's charged with then selling that land to a nonprofit or the housing authority or someone, some entity that's designed to be developing affordable housing. And it will be inherently less expensive because that hard work of ground cleanup and brownfield remediation can be done already. So it's, it's a strategy and it's complementary to all the other players in the field.
All right, Megan Bloom.
Hi. I just want to start by sort of piggybacking on something that was said earlier and just reinforcing that I think checking the anti-racist training box by attending implicit bias training sessions is like, basically like doing nothing. So really definitely push that window further and explore other local resources in that vein. So what I have to say tonight is, in response to my experience, attending the recent Planning Commission, public, I'm sorry, Comprehensive Plan, public workshops, and it seems kind of trivial in the context of the really passionate things that people have had to share tonight, but I'm gonna share it because I feel like it's really relevant to, in a, a sort of broad sense, to some of the frustrations that we're all having. So I've been attending these Comprehensive Plan public workshops over the last month or so, and it's obvious to me that the city's put a great deal of effort into making these meetings accessible to the public. They've taken place in different locations throughout the city, at different times of day. There's snacks, there's drinks available, it's a very hospitable environment. But what stood out for me is just how esoteric a process this is. Though it's convenient perhaps, there's little opportunity for anything resembling actual participation. Accessibility has become sort of a stand-in, I think, for participation. And so what I really want to put a fine point on is sort of the difference between community engagement and real participation. And I think we're just at this moment of deep audit in the way that we conceptualize democracy in our city and our country. And, and so that's why I'm gonna elaborate on this. So, let's see, the content of the plan itself is highly technical, it requires a great deal of knowledge in various topics of advanced study. The meetings are highly choreographed with breakout sessions that do little more than sort of intimidate the casual participant, which sort of has the end result of assuring the, the authority of the city staffers that are facilitating at each table. It's really difficult to imagine how this method of engagement could possibly be accessible in any way to the average citizen, let alone that anyone's experiences or thoughts or desires or recommendations could possibly really be integrated in a big way to the broader vision. And this process has been professionally facilitated, which really leaves little room for citizen-driven learning and deliberation. It's like a very corporate feeling experience. And so, at any rate, if you have any hope, I think, as a citizen of participating in any real way, you'd have to have been able to access the Comprehensive Plan online, read it thoroughly, study, develop a response. In the long term, there's a need for that, I think, but in the immediate, I think we really need to reevaluate what community engagement really means and think in terms of participation and democracy. Thanks.
All right, any, any comments? All right, so it's gonna break. That was the end of the Community Matters.
Want you on us back?
Ten minutes.